United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What we do want to do with the consent. Now second that, on favor. The next board meeting is October 5th. Following candid will be candidates tonight and it will be held at the West Side foundation. Any select board comments or announcements? We do have candidates in the public hearing for municipality election. Thursday, October 5th at 5:30, West Side foundation conference.
I do have a couple of comments. So I sent an email to our town attorney and Christine and the rest of the board about approval of our policy manual and policies because we were asked publicly to sign something at the last meeting for the code of conduct. And I'm not prepared to sign that until I get the email back from our town attorney stating that she reviewed all of our language, both in the policy and in our code of conduct. So I didn't hear a response back from you Christine on that email that I go Sally said she sent it to.
We addressed it to Sally.
And she told me that she sent it to you for further.
Right, she was informing me, but as she said in her response, I need direction from the full board before I follow up on anything. So if this, the full board wants to give me direction to follow up with Sally, I will.
So at several previous meetings, we talked about all of the documentation that we were recreating or editing for this town. You stated that they were going to Sally.
Yes, they were.
So I'm asking for some clarification that she's received them and has approved the language.
That is not an item that's on the agenda?
You know what, sometimes things come up that aren't on the agenda and I think it's important because we were asked at a previous meeting to sign documentation. I'm not going to sign it until I know our town attorney has looked at it. And I'm recommending that no one else sign it until we know that our attorney has put the appropriate seal of approval for our town moving forward.
So can we put that on the next agenda, please? Just what Sally's response is that she approved the way it's written.
Yes, but what concerns me Kathy is that we have gone over this. I have presented this code of conduct to the board.
Please.
At least two or three times.
Did Sally?
And Sally reviewed it and I told the board that she reviewed it.
I just want clarification from Sally that she's approved.
Well, see, this is what, this is what concerns me Suzanne is because you're asking for clarification from Sally, but that clarification is going to come through me. And I don't think you're going to be satisfied with that.
I want proof that our town attorney, that she has approved the language. And we've talked about it several times and I want to make sure that you're asking us to sign documents and you're asking us to put policies in place, that I want proof that our town attorney has agreed to everything in writing.
I can show you the legal bills that you've signed up on that clearly say code of conduct.
I'd like, I'd like a confirmation from our town attorney that she's approved.
Do you want me to ask Sally for a confirmation from?
I don't personally think that it's necessary.
Did she have any edits? She didn't have any edits?
Yes, she did have edits.
But we never saw those then, that's the point.
You don't necessarily see edits. When I'm presenting you, it's a full document that is approved by the town attorney.
See, you had, I had a question, I said, time you sign the document, I said, you asked us to sign it and I said, has it been done with Sally? You said, we'll sign it and then send it to Sally? I think that's actually backwards. I think.
No, that's not how it happened.
All right, let's, what's the problem? I feel maybe this is an executive hearing or?
I'm okay with that too.
It doesn't even need to be executive. I just, I'm trying to get clarification on what I could present to Suzanne that would satisfy her.
A letter from our attorney, an email, sufficient, but from Sally stating that she has approved our manual and code of conduct and all policy changes that we've put in the town. And I'm concerned that you say there was edits from Sally, that we were never informed of any edits.
Because you received it for approval after her edits.
We actually signed it before it went to Sally and I'm sure Carly can.
That's beyond the case.
Carly, would you be favorable, please, research that, those minutes? Because I'm pretty confident that I had this conversation.
According to, according to appropriate office procedure, we do not give instructions to the town clerk or the town treasurer. The instructions go through their supervisor who is the town administrator.
Christine, would you mind finding those documents in minutes that showed that conversation?
Any other comments from select board members?
I see that we're going to be talking on the board assessment review, but I do have some comments leading to that for, I just want clarification. And I read through our contract with Parker appraisal. Who was responsible for the inputting of changes to the property cards?
So let's start, talk about that when we get the board of assessments and let Christine at least have her say with no interruptions, so we can get a clear picture of her understanding. So what I'm going to ask everybody here in this meeting is that we don't interrupt one another. When people get things to say, let's let them say it. We tend to have a lot of talking over one another here and let's appreciate one another at the very end. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. That was just going to be my comment.
Public hearing, adoption of general assistance ordinance and appendices A through H for the period of October 1st, 2023 to September 30th, 2024. And that's the first document that we have. Christine, any comments from you?
No comments from me. I'll just clarify that we do not handle our own general assistance. The city of Bath takes care of our general assistance clients for us. We would actually be adopting these appendices for their use in reviewing applications for general assistance. So you would just.
For the town of West.
For the town of West.
Is that a cash flow that the money that comes back from the state just goes to Bath then? From our town.
No, it actually goes through our budget. Because when there is a claim on general assistance, the town of West actually pays for it.
That's part of our responsibility.
They notify the treasurer and the treasurer.
No, I just wanted to think, I'm just clarifying how that, because if they're responsible for it, we're paying for it. It goes through Bath, but we still pay for it.
Correct. Which really makes sense because it starts the double dipping so that they don't come from Bath, West runs with it.
That wouldn't happen.
It also makes sense in that, as you can see, the rules and regulations are extensive and we don't have anybody who's, aside from you, you don't want the job, do you?
I do not want the job.
Who is, who is capable of, or able at least to provide to look at the appropriate judgments.
And just for clarification, Brunswick handles its own general assistance now?
Correct.
Because it used to be Bath and Brunswick. So I move that we move forward with the adoption of general assistance ordinance and this is A through H.
Second, all in favor?
Okay, well, we do have one being assigned.
And while she's getting it up, the next item is going to be business item number one, Birch Point Road reconstruction.
Print made and signature.
Contract award, we can talk about that in a second. Or Steve, you want to, do you want to take the lead on this? You want to talk about it?
Well, we put out the bid, we got three bids. I was happy with the bid that we got that came in our budget range and I suggest to go forward with it.
Why do you think there's still such a huge gap between numbers?
Different companies have different, let's see, matchups and overhead. So some companies can do work a lot cheaper than other companies because they don't have such an overhead.
Were there items that people included in bids that weren't part of the quest? I mean, I look at these, you're almost double from one to the other. It seems like a significant amount.
They shouldn't have added something that wasn't on blueprints. If they did, they set them in their own town.
I'm just curious. I mean, I look at it, you're almost at delta 200,000 or 170,000.
Yeah, no, that's, if you, I remember that he bid over there and I was thinking whether the person wants the job or not also. So if they don't really get to get the job or not, they pull a crazy number because they get it, then it's worth it while I'm doing it.
I move that we approve the bid of 224,400 dollars for the reconstruction. That was the bid made by Ford Enterprises.
I second that. We have someone ready to question?
I didn't know if you take questions from the audience, it's okay? Okay, good.
Can you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, Kathleen Bouchard. My question is the experience of the low bidder and have they done work that we're aware of in the area of similar magnitude?
They have references. There's a town of Newport reference.
Can we have Steve answer that, please?
Yes, we got over four different references. A lot of them are from different road commissioners from different towns they did work for. They came back very well. Our engineer did a price comparison on the job and he was very close on the figure. I did a price, I was actually more than that figure. I feel comfortable that he can do this. It's really not that difficult of a job either. It's, it's just, it's going to take time, you're going to work it tight, you're going to, it's a bunch of.
And I assume the materials are comparable?
The materials are all listed, what you need. It's all there, they're on the blueprints.
Jamie?
Where does the company from?
Oh.
Oh? Probably don't have much to do with it.
Exactly.
Some of this is based on how much work people have to.
And the problem is, is we had a hard time getting a re-permit for the Amicore engineer for this project, so it came out so late. And you know as well as I do, I'm all booked up and doing whatever, so it wasn't something I could do or did on, so.
So all in favor? Audit rule number two, Winter Road contract review. Who wants to start, Jamie, Steve?
Well, I went with Jamie and he actually, we worked his figures because we're kind of over our budget that we anticipated. And he was very generous and offered us a deal for a three-year contract. And I suggest that we should take it because I've done some comparison and he's not far off and it's going to happen.
We're going to have winter this year?
What's that mean?
We are going to have winter this year.
If it doesn't start raining.
Well, if you would guarantee us, we wouldn't.
I can tell you right now, this could be a winter that he probably going to re-permit if our weather pattern doesn't change.
If, if the farmers all been active writing.
Right. And then he's bound to get it to winter, I mean, he's had three years off, you know, so.
How, what is the delta year or year recently?
Jamie, did you update?
I did.
I can make copies for the board.
I apologize, my secretary who was gone, I got that, so I can get an actual written on. This is pretty much what we discussed earlier. That's opposed before. So my third year of under, I wanted to parry the district. I included the bond.
And what would you agree?
You guys provide yourself and so forth. And I fit those a few little five dollars I wanted to help go forward. I appreciate that and adjusted it. And I'll try to fit the budget. And I will have that done up in this form tomorrow and I'll email it.
Okay, that works, thank you.
But I'd have to say Jamie was very well worked with. He negotiated the price and worked with us, so.
If you get a copy of that back.
And other than that picky little spot by driveway.
That's a strange little spot, flat when you get stuck.
Where are we with the, Jamie, I know there's a little driveway that you were talking about, maybe you can tell them, Mark? Did that ever happen? Was this survival?
Lively, Lively Drive is very challenging to turn around and you can't seem to, we kind of got everybody happy the way we're doing it, but it's, you've got to go through the last guy's driveway, basically plow this driveway before I'm going to be able to turn around. They don't want, it's not pushed this way, you don't want it pushed that way, so I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to just send a small truck because we're out with these bigger trucks already unless we can just, they can hold off till towards the end of the storm and clean it up. We suggest maybe handing that to the, to the smaller part, but I mean, we can cop it.
They may just have to wait until the end.
It worked out good, the guy gave us permission to turn around on the very end, so we plowed him out pretty much and he was happy, so towards the end of it, it worked out. Just a lot of these turnarounds are very challenging for the bigger trucks.
Carly might need that for the minutes.
Carly, can we do something? Make a comment about that too. She was, we said a 224, I believe, the first year.
And on a different note, I do mistake doing a wonderful job. Can't believe what they're doing with there because, oh, it's great. I hope they get the section by.
Who's bringing it up?
That would be very. Great by Dolphins Old Place, that stretch. Isis.
I'm curious to see if we have that.
Really old and making.
So Carly has some news, if you'd like it, about which one?
Yeah, I called, well, I talked to DOT on Friday. They acknowledged that there's a few washout areas on State Road.
Just a few.
Towards the fire department that they're working on long-term solutions to. And of course, I had to bring up which spring hill in that spring area and they said two weeks, three tops, they're going to dig it up and they're going to put a pipe underneath it, so.
Have you heard any more on a culvert replacement?
No, no news on that.
No?
And DOT is doing some work down at that New Bedros store to that whole flooding issue, so they're in the area which is being moved to, like, I gave everything they want.
Well, I think the town will need to follow up on.
Yeah.
They said they were going to tow the select board with that, that one you pitched this summer and we met them again over there, so.
You're extremely confident about that.
Right, and I hope we just let it, don't say nothing and don't keep bringing it up.
So have they, have they made any promises about the place by Hanson's that the road keeps flooding and rather than minor?
By Hanson?
On Barry's Hill Road?
Oh, they're heading right up through there, so hopefully they go all the way to the end. But basically the Hanson thing was just a, they didn't clean it up for years and.
Well, they were cleaning it a couple of weeks ago. They had one of those downed parts, but.
So I just want to thank Jamie for looking at this budget. I know everything's increased ridiculously. And Steve for negotiating this new budget and it's good to see town people working together with town people versus the angst that we sometimes have. So thank you both very much, we really appreciate it.
No problem, I thank you as well.
Jamie, do you think they're hitting it? Have you seen that spot where that, that freeze alley is on Barry's Hill and they got to that? I don't think they have.
They didn't do anything today, the machine is still.
They're still doing it, I don't.
I was just hoping that, I mean, they've got to know that's a problem.
Well, yeah, the work they're doing, I assume they go away because.
You hope, because I don't want them to be here and not, do we have, we told them specifically? Or how much, can you, if you see them saying, we have.
I don't know, who determines on how much they do there or who you talk to, maybe you.
They have a budget and the budget result is.
But can you, I mean, you know where, you both know where it is, would you be comfortable?
I have no what to talk to them, say, I can talk to them, I'm going to face them and they just, I'll tell, tell you what you want to hear and not.
But if they don't, if you're not aware of that specific location.
They're aware.
I'll talk to them when they, when I talk to them about the culvert, I'll beg you.
Yeah, please, me, probably buy them on turf.
Yeah, no, culvert and Barry's Hill, anything else on the list?
Have we heard anything more about? Oh, I can't, got somebody that keeps going, yeah, okay, Car Cats.
Okay, well, that's part of the culvert.
That's what I, that's what I.
And Jamie, where are we on our capacity for salt sand?
We're not in mad shape, seeing what we have, we still have quite a bit left from the last three years, we still have stuff that, from three years ago, that was in the back and we pulled it all out so we can use up the older stuff. So I don't think we're going to need a whole lot this year to add to it, probably what? Thousand, fifteen hundred yards maybe?
Yeah, that's, we went under contract with up to 25 to 100 yards if we need it at that price. So if it takes a year to get it at that price, then that's great. But we did go under a contract with reconstructions and I will check out the sand and make sure that he's hauling in the stuff that we want. He's supposed to be, he's supposed to start this with, oops, I don't know, but we did get our salt delivered, so we got plenty of salt there, that's close to 120 ton there we have, so.
Yeah, because we still had something left over from the last year.
And we just got to be six years.
So what is our pleasure? I move that we accept the proposal as presented this evening for Winter Road maintenance. A second, all in favor? Thank you.
Kathy, I think there might be another real concern while Steve's here. Did you have something else you wanted to talk about tonight? Yeah. I thought it was on the agenda.
No, it's not on the agenda, this is Steve's here at my end, he turned it on.
Well, there's a bit of road where the state ends its responsibility for paving and then you ditch Pittsburgh and we unfortunately are right in that space. It's a very dangerous area and I think Kathy said.
Yes, okay, I'll fill you in on that. Right now we're having a hard job getting quicker to do any paving, so go in a second room. That area from Shell Cove or Rock Cove to the line is going to get ditched and paved his fault.
It's not rigging, it's called.
Right from the corner all the way to the city line. Which, it's not as bad, it's, it's rough, it's not as good as what Pittsburgh has had paved or the state has said paved, but you know, that, it's a, it's a hard one to go because the town, we've never had that road before and then it just got dropped in our lap, but it's our road all of a sudden, so.
Yeah, and it's dangerous because there's no lining left anymore and at night you could go right off the road. In fact, someone did go off, washed it right into the.
There were people going off that road, maybe, it's a very dangerous road.
So we are going to get it done and.
You sure?
At the same time they do Birch, Birch Point?
Actually, it'll probably be done before Birch Point. Because Birch Point, they'll be working down there and then we're going to have that overlaid, that's about three quarters of a mile overlaid, then we're going to shim Birch Point to make it easier to plow this winter and then we're going to overlay it next year and do the ditches, clean the ditches and the culverts all up.
Will they be striped though, this, this job?
No, not this year. All the strippers done.
Steve, we had with Birch Point, we'd allocated how much? 250, was it not?
Yeah, 250, yeah.
So we have now a surplus of 26.
Say that then.
We, the bid came in at 224.
Yeah, so that extra we have will work for paving that whole section maybe over. What we did, we made up pretty good. We had 250,000 for show by getting that all stabilized. What I did when I, when we had to approve with the engineer, I had to go to the end of Birch Point Road, pass the farmhouse, ditching both sides of the road, building the shoulder up or tip right off, all that and I send back and should be getting that.
That's going to be good, wind's lost, plow truck.
It does, yeah. And there will be another 150 feet of guardrail that's in on that bit for that section.
Nice guideline. All settled in?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll leave.
Any other questions on roads?
I got one thing, I got to bring that. Jimmy Worf in the South of Oxford's been saying they're willing to go ahead and put that thing up and going for our roads where they are, the light, the road, and get that system going. We've been sitting on it now for four years, nothing to do on it, so we might have to spend a few thousand dollars to get this up and running, but we need somebody to get us going on that.
Well, program?
Yeah, on the program we have.
I would love for one to see that happen, yes.
It's just so much easier for all of us, everybody can go on and they can see what's happening. I mean, it's hard to really track all the stuff, especially road signs and.
Do we have any money in our road budget that we?
You just saved 26,000 dollars.
We have to hire them.
We have, and I did mention that we're going to do something with that at the, at the budget meeting and stuff, so it's not like, it's not like we've got to come up with that. I'm just saying that I'm going to hire them to do, I know you guys are having any additions to go ahead and start it. I want to get the program from Christine, give it to them and have them get it up and running.
I think this is huge, I think it's a wonderful idea and I think we have with Mr. Worf and Mr. Worf.
Well, Jimmy's been a road, was a road official for a while and he's lived in the town his whole life and that's, that's, I mean, up his valley and his son just graduated high school for doing the same thing.
You can call it college.
Yes, yeah, college.
So on the, on the turn that you're referencing on the Pittsburgh line, would it be, at all be beneficial when that is paved to, I'll say, put a rumble strip so that people know where the, because we constantly wear off paint on that.
You just went from one area to another area.
Well, because while she's here in her concern, I was just thinking of, because we're not painting and if we're going to pave.
I tell you what we can do.
I mean, I don't know if.
We have already, about five years ago, I went to a sign flash for the town and I got a bunch of free signs with reflective arrows we can put on that color. Other than that, the rumble strips, I don't, I don't even know.
If you saw somebody down that's really going fast, they're probably going to put them out into the road.
Well, I mean, you put them up quickly, it's going to, you like to get hit them. So if they go through that, then they probably, everyone's up for arguing.
So do we need, can Steve just hire that or do we need the board to vote on that? What do we need to do with?
You guys hold it on, I get spending the money.
So you will take care of that?
I will take care of that, I will get some kind of supplement that from the Worf boys.
I know that we have Steve engaged, our.
I think she wants to talk about something else, so go ahead.
I want to ask what is.
Yes, because you're talking. Oh, okay, it's a software program that we have that we can put all the data in on all the roads we fixed and what we do to them, so that we can come up with a maintenance schedule for all of our culvert's roads. So 10 years from now, you have a whole different group of people here, they can see what's been done and what hasn't been done. Not had it, it makes sense.
There's a repair schedule, which we have to track it on what's been done, what's done.
So like where you called in on that road needs to be done, I can come in, punch it up on the computer, that area, and next time you called it, probably who then we're working in the, can tell you, yeah, that's planned for this day. We don't have any program like that at all right now.
I'd say it's needed.
So it's all we're in about right now. 30 years ago, somebody did that piece of property you're talking about. So it's all we're in about right now, thirty years ago, somebody did that piece of property you're talking about, but we don't know why.
So that's why that, that section has been getting neglected through there, and I just had it paved like four or five years ago, but the. Needs a ditching, needs, you know, good work, and it was hard to get that in the budget, and we had a lot more washable roads. For the budget we had, and then to take care of first.
So Steve, you, you felt, what was the estimate of price you thought it was gonna be?
Two.
To for the inputting out of there?
Uh, two to three thousand dollars, I'll find out exactly from when I read up the contract and have it done.
I, I move that we have our road commissioner pursue an engagement for the gathering and collecting and inputting data for the DOT road platform, not to exceed three thousand dollars.
I don't want to put a limit on it.
You put a limit on it, you just put along something again, I'm not gonna take advantage of us, but what do you want to do?
Yeah, I'd rather not put a limit, because I think.
How about go to five, just in case we need to do it, and then I'll, I'll put a stop, a limit on that. But two to three, I'm pulling that pretty much out of my hand, thinking what it'd be, they gotta travel every road, they gotta document every pavement. They gotta do the signs, put the road signs up, I mean, I can't tell you what they, I didn't think the policy on that was thirty-seven and a half percent either, so. This is about how the road budget, correct? So I would say, don't put a limit on it yet, let's see what he gets.
Yeah, I think we need to talk to Jimmy and have him come up with some idea of what it's gonna cost him before we put any price tag on it.
Let's not keep making this too hard guys, let's get it.
No, that's what I'm saying, if Jimmy comes up and he says three thousand ten, we've limited you with three thousand.
Well, it shouldn't be, you know, it should, it's something that I need for that, for the.
It's some of the citizens of West Bathany.
Right, so.
We've been trying to get this done for like, seven years.
So, I mean, let's not try to make anything difficult, I've worked with Jimmy, I've worked with that, I'm not allowed to take advantage of us.
David?
Should also point out that the board okayed a few weeks ago that he could spend up to fifty thousand dollars. So, I mean, this is not gonna cost fifty thousand dollars, so let him do his job.
So, I agree, um, with the, with the amendment, um, having, having no limit up to fifty thousand dollars, um.
I know that fifty thousand dollars is a lot.
I know, um, with the amendment having taken off the limitation, um, I would second the motion to allow Steve to authorize. To authorize Steve to negotiate the contract with the Worf's.
Thank you.
Seconded, um, David? Just, just one other while we're on this, because I think we're moving in the right direction, so I wanna keep moving in the right direction. Do you have a current understanding of what your budget is and a balance sheet? You know what your budget is, have we gotten there yet? No, so that's something we need to.
That's something that I would like to have a little better understanding degree than I have to go to Julie or Christine to understand.
I think we're all supposed to see it as a running tally, so we understand where we are and what's been spent.
I know what I asked for, and where it goes, but sometimes I get confused when I go in and see it, why we took it from this, because of that, and that, you know, I just gotta know. I don't understand what you guys have right now.
Christine, can you have it prepared for the next one?
Um, go ahead. Um, yes, I can have something prepared for the next meeting.
I just think that's the next step that we're trying to do.
And to repeat what I've said before, that's something that, um, we need to get from the treasurer. And treasurer, treasurer's job is, has become much more difficult because of our inability to get a timely audit. Um, so the reports that we want to provide to this live board. We're not prepared to do those reports on a timely basis yet. Um, so it's something that we're going to need to work on.
I'm sorry, I don't know how a road commissioner can do the job out of those reports, it doesn't make any sense to me, so.
Can she pull what we have, I mean, it's not.
We can pull a budget, we, we can definitely pull the budget that we have in Trio, that's easy. Um, but handing Steve a printout from Trio is kind of like reading power blipx, if you're not used to it. He can see where the money is budgeted, but he can't see any of the money that has been carried over from previous years, so there's.
Wasn't Birch Point a carryover?
Yeah.
Birch Point.
The ventilation was.
There's, that's for special projects, but there's additional money that's been carried over from year to year, those are numbers that Steve and I can't see right now.
So how hard would it be to put that manually?
On a sheet of paper?
I'll talk with Julie about it and see what we can come up with.
That would be very handy.
Yeah, because I think, and I don't want to sound, you do so much work that it couldn't be done manually, just so you know where you are. I'm not saying you don't give a lot of work, but I think the figures wise, we could, should be able to take, keep track of manually until such times we can pull reports from Trio.
Yeah, and just to go back, I'm sorry, this is kind of moving fast for me, was that motion approved unanimously?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm watching, it's in the.
I'm only about halfway.
Okay, anything else on roads?
I, I, just a comment, I still, I mean, I still appreciate the difference when I drive in other towns. That ours, our road seem to be in really pretty good condition.
They do, and I notice that a lot too, and it makes me feel good.
And I don't, I don't have to go over too many bumpy, bumpy roads.
Well, what I'm mostly impressed with is going through some of these downs and seeing all these washouts. And we survived a lot of hard rains this year, and the roads have taken it. We haven't had no emergency pelvic, wash towel, or road wash floor.
You guys have no.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's doing before you walk out, it's a door jam, not much for my luck.
Uh-huh. A lot of miles I've gone on my tractor in these last storms, so.
Thank you.
You are more than welcome to stay, but you don't need to.
No, I was just wanting to see if I could steal Mike for a minute, and talk to him for a second.
Okay.
Oh, it was good for us to use.
Article number three, the process and administrative procedures, and Christine, I think that you.
Um, yes, and also, did you want to talk about your conversation with Bob, because that might be helpful to this discussion?
I'm trying to think of everything he said to me, there's so much. But, what I got from Bob is. He, um. He did the reevaluation, um. If people have any questions, concerns, or need abatements to go through the process, um. There is, um. If we come to an abatement and it's not just an easy common one, he will be reviewing that abatement. What am I missing?
Yeah, I think just to, um. Make the point that they have, Parker appraisal has no intention of leaving us, um, without correcting errors and completing their work.
He is more than happy, um, he will correct any and all what are perceived errors, whether it's for or against the, um. Resident, if you think you've been under appraised, or over appraised, or there's something wrong with your appraisal, he would like you to, to bring it forward. The other thing is, he did, he did this process for us, we need to follow it through, because we're not gonna be able to find whether to do pickup work for us, um, at this time. What we got, we're stuck with, so we really need to follow the process and follow it through, um. That's what I kind of got from him.
Is. Sure. Um, is the process for a citizen to, uh, file a claim for abatement on our website, so it's clear what they need to do?
Yes, do you want me to go to?
Yes, awesome, okay.
Okay.
Um, I'm not asking, I just wanna make sure that it's available if the resident.
It's right on our homepage, West Bath.
It's probably there, yeah.
Yeah, the process is all outlined, it probably took a little deal of time to put everything on the website, so that the taxpayers know how to. Um, navigate the process, and all the phones are there, and explanations, and references to, um. You know, applicable state requirements, um. If somebody isn't comfortable, um, reviewing the process online, the town office staff is ready and available to assist. Um, property tax clerks can be requested at the town office, or by emailing the town clerk, and that is also referenced on the website. Um, there's also a link to main revenue services to review, uh, recent sales in your neighborhood, if you're comfortable doing that. Um, there's information provided describing the process to appeal to the board of assessment review. If an abatement that is submitted is denied by this board of assessors. And taxpayers have a hundred and eighty-five days from commitment, um, which is February twenty-ninth, to request an abatement. So are there any questions specific to the abatement process that we can answer for you?
I have some comments.
Yes, gentlemen.
My name is Bruce, um, I live down in Birch Point, been there for thirty years. Uh, I have a big problem with my, how my land was assessed, I've had a Dublin, I have a half an acre, five, well, point five-two. And I went from, uh, three eighty to eight to seven eighty-five. And I have a hundred foot of frontage, and, but it goes back. And one of those pieces, I bought a piece from John Moss, I had the supporting paperwork, I paid six thousand dollars for that piece of land. And they put it into my, uh, my parcel, and I got taxed on the rate of one point five million. On a point, point five-two acres, and I had a big problem with that. I've got all the supporting documents, I got a picture, my, uh, plot plan here, and I got the document from, uh. John Moss, you can look at it, I, I hope we can get this resolved, because. I got something in the mail, just for you people to know, uh. In Central, I'll show you, I was quite surprised to, uh. See this, uh, getting in my mail yesterday. And there it is, you can look at it. I haven't contacted him yet, but.
The rest of us are curious. It's just what I was saying.
Pardon?
He may have been overtaxed.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm overtaxed. And here's, uh.
Your license to happen is what I was just describing, you would fill out the abatement form, attach it to all of that supporting information. And we would send it off to Parker appraisal to review it again.
I have a big problem with Mr. Packer, when he came to my house, he stayed in the parking lot, he's writing things down, he never got out and walked around or anything. Maybe you don't have to do that, but then he doubled my assessment and.
But that's part of the abatement process, so if he didn't get out this time, we would want to take a closer look.
I've got pictures to show that my, my little land flats out, uh, it's, there's outcroppings there, it's not prime, prime waterfront, I make it work for me, but it's not prime.
Okay, in order to start the process, I hope that you'll just fill out the abatement form with your name and contact information, attach that to what you have.
I'm not too good sometimes at talking, uh, like this, oh, I want that paper back.
Not over upstairs, but he has some.
That, uh, did I get that paper from that outfit to call?
I think you got me that.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Have you, did you pull your prior tax record as well to appear them?
Yes, I did, that's what I got in the mail.
I got somebody that.
There's somebody who's fishing, but I don't know how they got my name, I mean.
But, um, probably any of us is likely to get one.
That's my current.
Anybody looking at waterfront property.
So it's your, your, so this is.
And that's my private good.
Nobody at Mr. Farm, with this property card and all that.
You, you want your last year and this year's property card to see the differences, so, this is, um, this leads me into, and I, we talked about it, we're gonna have, um. We put on this agenda, I believe we should move forward with a session for our community. Because there's a ton of people that don't know how to do the process, we wanna help them, make sure they have the information, we should host it at the flyer station. And encourage anyone who has questions, that we help them understand the process, I think it's a disservice for people not to be informed on that, on everything.
Yeah, I started to fill it out, but, uh.
Yeah, it's, you know.
It's confusing, not personal property, I hate it, uh.
That's really all we need to get the process started.
I mean, I've got a couple of mispellings, uh.
We don't care, we don't care about that, you can misspell.
That's why I was in Cowley yesterday, and got a couple of sheets, she brought me a couple of Cowley.
I think to get the process going.
I talked to a couple of real estate brokers on, and asked them, could, could I get one point two million for my place, they said, no, I don't think you can, Bruce, that's why.
They're not gonna say it's an error, but it could be a simple error, so we'll see when we get that in.
So, um.
If you're comfortable leaving here tonight, you're welcome to do that, or you could bring it into the town office, we can help you with that.
Yeah, I want you to.
The all of the supporting information.
I'm, I'm gonna challenge it, I mean, I'm.
Well, this is, this is a challenge.
I don't think it's right, and I'm gonna challenge it, uh, whether I have to get outside help, I hope not, I hope it can be resolved myself.
Well, we, we need all of the documentation also, so I don't know if you wanna hand that in, but.
I'm not really, I've.
Juanita?
The paperwork that we brought in for preliminary hearings, I would anticipate that Parker appraisal jacketed all of that backup information. And if you have it, then.
And I don't want to end up, I mean.
I think this will get the process started, and then we can.
Actually, we're gonna have to provide all of this information, are, are you able to come into the town office tomorrow so we can make copies of all of that? Is that something you can do?
I will try, I get, uh.
His format would be.
Yeah, then if we, once we have all of the information, we can get the process started.
Well, I would like to sit down with somebody and explain it to them, I mean, uh, well, you can see it, I have pictures, photographs taken of my place, showing the dog, uh. On the flats.
Do you have the paperwork from the hearings jacketed, and I should.
I don't have.
So in other words, when I came in, I had significant paperwork that I spent hours putting together. I would anticipate that Parker appraisal has that here, so, uh, you have access to that, you had to anticipate.
No, we do not.
You don't have the paperwork from the hearing, you know if Bob at least captured it?
I don't know, but we can find.
There's a forty yard that I bought from Mr. Moss.
Yes.
I bought a piece, and I, I paid six thousand dollars for this, it was one tenth of an acre. And they lumped it onto my, my piece, and they're showing it on here, this plot plan, and I'm getting taxed at the rate of one point five million per acre. That's, that's an assessment of a hundred and fifty thousand, a point one acres, on a, a piece that I paid six thousand of total cost with the survey, the appraisal. The land was six thousand, that was six years ago, now is that right, that, and it's way in the back?
Yeah. So we will work, we will work for a resolution on this. We don't have an answer today. But we will, we will. So I'm going to, before we go forward, I just want to ask, can we just please try and speak one at a time because it's really hard to take notes when Kathy's talking and you interject and there's questions over questions. Thank you. Did you have something? Did I say something?
I have two more, well, one is an observation and thank you, Carly, for the manual and thank you to the board for saying I had offered to purchase the manual because I thought I would get ordinance. Thank you that it was provided at no cost. Two observations, Christine had mentioned the link to Main Revenue Services for sales. What that does, and obviously as an assessor, it's not that I don't know how to use the system. What that does is it links only to the sales done by the larger law firms who do the real estate tax transfer documents in a digital format. All other transfer documents that will be matched with the deeds and traveled with the sales, so when you're local real estate attorneys, those come to the town, to the assessor, to the town, up to 90 days later. So the link that you have on the website is not meant to be deceptive, but it is very deceptive. It is incomplete, totally incomplete.
It will not show sales that are taken unless it's processed from a significant.
Only if it was done on a digitized real estate transfer document and it is an RETTD is the acronym. The larger firms are required by Main Revenue Services to file only a digital writ, I mean, term writ, so I can't say the other one, too tired. They are required to follow them in a digital format. All other, depending on the volume of the real estate firm working with folks, they don't have to. So most of our local attorneys, I will go on for the chance that I serve and pull all the digital files, I might pull the digital files. But you have to wait for Main Revenue to kit anything that is done, but it's small firms, and they do that only once a month. Guaranteed it's going to be a 60 day delay before they come to you at a town level. The bulk of the digitized writs are also incomplete and they're coded improperly. I'm not being negative, I'm not mocking this, I change them routinely. You have to, because when you file your sales return in the state, there's just the bulk of what I'll get from the people in Portland, the Kennebec River is coated in this ocean. Well, okay, but it's not. So what you're seeing is not meant to be deceptive. It is helpful to someone like me because I know what I'm looking at, but for the general taxpayer, it is incomplete, very incomplete. It's not all sales. My second question, a link to the same topic, please. I appreciated the manual. The first 20 pages are basically an index to the trio, the software, the assessment software. Everything after pound schedule, page seven in that section, and I think it goes up to page 92 at the end, they have nothing to do with, that was not utilized. If you look at the cost lines, the only cost is for tree growth in each of those neighborhoods. Those neighborhoods were not incorporated into our, our system here. It's just redundant paperwork that when somebody hit print, they regurgitated all those. They have no information at all. So if the red book that you folks got two weeks ago when I was here is the only manual, just heads up, look where it says land category, pound seven, after that, you're going to be seeing only zeros. Those pages have no relevance, none. And I think that would be very confusing and intimidating to most taxpayers trying to work with it, though I do appreciate your grace. And Carly was so quick, you know, sent Carly an email, 10 minutes later and boom, and I didn't have time to commit, but he came in filthy and for work and he got the copy, so thank you for all of that. But just saying, I want to know with list of the sales used during the revaluation is, was the land extraction method utilized, which means, there's not a lot of raw land sales in our small towns. So to come up with the value of land, Appraisers, Assessors, take all of the sales and then they rely, I want to know if Parker Appraisal relied on Marshawn Swift or means what cost table, but I want to know for sure that they did that. It's not in the manual, there's not a single reference. It's in the contract, but not the manual. That should then tell me if they rely on Marshawn Swift, was it adjusted by what date? Because Marshawn Swift is constantly outdated. And within main, do they use Polon cost, Bangga cost, Augusta cost? I want the specifics, that should be in a manual. Now, you folks may have all of this, and that may not be what you're giving me free and I'll pay for it, but I'm asking if you have that. The manual does not list any of the sales. I have total access because I am still, I was founding member of the statewide multiple listing service and I still subscribe. I pulled on my own sales when I came in to meet with Jessica for Parker Appraisal. When I made reference to them, she didn't connect with me at all, there was no conversation about it. I thought perhaps she was, it was late in the day, but I'm not sure that she'd seen those classified sales. I want to ask you, we are in the manual, you have that, you need that, you can't maintain this town without that, and it's public practice. There is no reference to whether the waterfront is, is it by a builder's acre, 200 square feet? And then additional waterfront of far less contributory value? So just looking at the family salt waterfront, we all can kind of picture the Hennessy's salt waterfront, the Bubba Peninsula, then there are more than 200 feet. Well, in most towns, the first 200 feet, and then it varies from town to town, and this manual doesn't say how it was done. Is it on a timeline, meaning from this point to this point, straight line? Is it by the linear foot? All of these methods are acceptable, but they're not defined in a manual. Typically, the first 200 feet carries the heaviest burden on your tax at quite possibly, Bruce was saying, I think it's at 1.2, bear with me. But then the next 200 feet is an incredibly reduced contributory value. So you might drop down to $3,000 an acre. For the next 1 to 10 acres, on waterfront, probably 5,000. And then on 11 to 20, down to 3,000. No, these aren't exact numbers, I'm just saying. That's what's in a manual, so that you can grab a hold of it. I can, I'm going to give you a value, the one I found was a view, but it's inappropriate for someone to try to rework the assessor's methodology. But if they don't put their methodology into manual, you can't work with that methodology. So that which has been printed, again, I thank you, but in essence, it's an index to the trio program, and it means something to me, but I would be shocked, and I'm sure it does to Carly, which is Christine, but to David, to Bruce here, I'd be shocked. So is there another manual? So my final question, that's the meat that I am looking for. Do you have that? I will pay for it, badly.
I don't have one, no.
Thank you.
So, and I, you know, just for you, sir, you know, you claim that you're on title. Was your card accurate? No, 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 I don't want to see it, I'm just going to make a statement.
I got pictures.
I'm not pulling it. I just want to say, was your card accurately called title in this year's valuation, or was it changed? Because there were edits made out of the properties that may or may not have been accurate. So I guess I have some questions. It's okay for me to go with everyone?
No.
Okay. In the contract, Parker Appraisal said that they were going to create new cost schedules based upon, Juanita, I have a question for you on this.
Oh, okay.
So in the contract, it says they're going to create new cost schedules based upon local market. I believe that's what you were just referencing. I'm not an expert in valuation.
You are correct. My concern is, it looks like they pulled a kind of database from another town. And trio recommends frequently when you're purchasing these trio modules, oh, just use any other town, you know, Changuis, Cassada, Bristol, or whatever, and done its end. But then the revow must do all the heavy lifting mathematically to analyze it and to revise that basic soup kit to reflect, and I'm not seeing it.
And that's kind of where, you know, the three of us are here are tasked with tabulating these abatements. And I personally would like to see, when they come, when they come to us.
You don't have to tabulate them. You get a recommendation from Parker Appraisal with the explanations.
So, but even our residents don't know how to tabulate what their requested value is if we don't give them the proper information to do that. I don't believe you've applied that. I don't even know how to apply for what my tax corrections should be, to be frankly honest. And I guess, who input the changes into our system?
We did some internally, staff did some of the changes based on the property cards that were presented to us by Parker Appraisal. And then after the hearings, they also made some changes.
Who did the predominant amount of inputting?
Probably staff.
So I guess, you know, I can't imagine then how my card was changed. I presume you guys know the properties in this town that you're making the edits.
Well, if you submitted an abatement with your concerns or some kind of letter addressing your concerns and we looked at it, we would determine at that time, hopefully we would be able to determine where the errors were made, how the errors were made.
Because when we had, and it's in a, for clarification, and I think Kathy had the same concern last week, I don't want to speak for you by any means. When we were given the transitional change, reduction of staff for our assessor to go to a contract assessor, I think it was presented to me that we were going to have an individual here on a regular basis.
That was necessary.
Not dynamic. That, that was here to address our town concerns when they have them. You know, that maybe may not be how you present it, but I think right now with all the concerns, instead of waiting for Parker to come in and look at someone's paperwork, I think we should have a schedule established that Parker should be here to talk with people, to help them at least understand how to do the abatement. Because I'm not sure that anyone at this table or employed at this town hall right now has the capacity to make recommendations on valuation for anybody, they're not licensed in that subject matter.
We were never suggesting that.
And so how do we expedite some of these concerns to make sure they're in a timely fashion versus waiting for Parker Appraisal to get them to look at it and come back? I think it would be, we could, and I think, I still think we should host a session for our community at the fire hall, I think it's going to be big enough for that, to invite people to come in and explain how the process happened, how they, if they feel that they were inappropriate, I'm going to say not unjustly, because some may not be unjust, inappropriately changed in their records. How do we help them understand what those changes are and what they think it should be? For the cost justification, we don't know, if their value went up, how do we let them understand whether it's the right value? They don't even know whether they should file an abatement or not, because we can't give them a figure to determine what an addition of abetment is, or what a, or reduction of square footage, or change in waterfront. We have no way for them to understand whether it's accurate enough so they can even, should they file an abatement? So I think we need to help them. I don't think that we, with this revow process, and the amount of errors and phone calls I've received, I think we need to host a session. And I move that we decide to do that as a board right now. I move that the board decide how to assist our residents and hold a session at some future date and have Parker Appraisal, one of those appropriate there to explain the process.
Mike, you have a question? The state statute says that a revow will provide sufficient data to allow future assessments. Does not state that we must keep it in your pocket.
That's true.
Until, and have to go back to the firm who did the revow. You do not have any idea of what a grade one is, what a grade two is, what a grade three is. And you can't tell anybody that their grade A building is a grade A, or whether it's a grade C, or whether it's a grade D. And you do not possess that knowledge. And until you do, you can't tell anybody anything.
And mainly keep saying we're not going to do that.
But you have to, whoever does it, Christina, Carly, the land splits. How does Carly?
We're not doing those. We never said we were going to do those.
Mike?
Town staff is going to perform administrative and clerical functions.
Okay.
Similar to those that are performed in towns with assessing clerks.
I would like a clarification on pounds contracting criteria, because I was told you couldn't cut a contract for 6500 to a professional. But we're cutting a 2500.
25,000.
25,000 dollar contract to an appraisal firm who did a somewhat unsatisfactory job with no bid, with no contract. So what is our contracting policy?
I think I can hear that.
I think the Board of Assessors.
Okay, well, well, I think they don't understand, Mike.
I do.
All right, we're talking people again, if we're going to do that, we're going to seize this.
I did not ask Christine view on what took place. I asked the Board of Selectmen what the Board of Assessors' policy is.
And we just gave Christine permission to speak for us.
I missed that. I do too.
Christine, please.
There is no contract for unknown work with Parker Appraisal or with anybody else. We allotted $20,000 in this year's budget for any expenses that might occur as a result of needing assessing services.
But that was, I believe that was presented to us as a replacement for a staff employee to a contract assessor for the town. My interpretation of that was that there was going to be someone on a regular basis in the town hall to address our town's concerns as it was in the past, not with an employee, but with a contract individual. Did anyone else have that determination?
Mine was a little bit different. I didn't think we were going to have a full time, I thought we were going to have someone.
On site?
No.
On?
What do I want to call it?
On call.
On call.
On consultation.
Consultation is what I thought.
I think if people are not going to take me at my word or trust what I'm saying, I don't have anything more to add.
Well, I'm just trying to clarify, I have something to add, because it was my, you know, because we have, I thought we were going to have someone on site to address whether it's contract or not, and our community's concerned, and I don't feel that we've stepped into either your understanding or my understanding of how that transferred. So I guess, could you clarify what you think that is?
No, I am not willing to do that tonight when nobody is taking me at my word.
It's not your word, I'm just clarifying what the interpretation of it is. I'm just clarifying what the interpretation of it is.
It may just be, your interpretation is different than what I presented. And it may just be because I didn't explain it well and because people hear things differently. You know? People have their own way of absorbing information and viewing the world. So, we are not gonna have somebody here on a routine basis or for any scheduled hours.
Do you think, short-term, it would be beneficial coming out of this revale to have someone who's maybe every Wednesday from ten to two, or whatever it happens to be, available for our community to address questions? Why they should or shouldn't have an abatement?
I don't know if that's feasible. That's not up to me.
I'd like to offer an opinion on that. Because I get what you're saying. It's great to have someone in-house that people can come in and talk to. And that's the way it was done in the past. And I think there were a lot of problems with that. Yet, it's great for someone to sit down and talk to someone. But in the past, that ended up with that assessor, assessing agent, being kind of strong-armed. I really like, there's a lot, this is a rough process, but I do appreciate the paper trail that people write down on their form. I think this is off, and it's reviewed. But I appreciate that there's face-to-face, but I do think that having a paper trail and having people fill out a form is not a lot to ask for this process. I'm not denying it. I am a fan of paper trails, actually, across the board in every facet of it. So I'm not against a paper trail. What I'm suggesting is that we have someone to assist the beginning of the paper trail because they don't know, in some cases, how to interpret what has been presented to them. And I think having, not on a permanent basis, but a set schedule, short-term, for our residents to count on to, to come in and ask questions that no one at this table can answer.
But then, we just have, don't they just have the option to do that?
They did have that option. And to, and then we sort of-
Yeah, well, you're pretty harsh.
Then people are asking that person, should I apply for an abatement or not, that? That's another question. Can you understand? Can you explain the differences? Or how do you, Wanya?
Uh, whichever decision you folks who manage town hall ultimately make is not, you're going to make that decision. But I'm going to say directly, I've never known of hearings. When I was in the preliminary hearing and I said to Jessica, with Bob standing at the doorway, when should I expect to give out? Will it be within a couple of weeks? The point of a hearing is to respond. If the decision is, you've given us the information and we disagree with you, or the decision is, we're going to make some changes, but the information goes back. And I mean, I've lived through several revales. I was stunned to be told by Bob, he also suggested I sue the town over the road infringing on my parcel, which I didn't have any concerns of that. I have a problem with Parker appraisal saying to me, well, sue the town. And on the setback, the limitation of one, one particular lot can't be built on, that is not what someone who would be your agent, whether that agent is in New Hampshire, Freeport, wherever, and never in here. That's not the attitude that I am at all comfortable with as a taxpayer. I mean, they said, Bob said, wait till the tax bills come out. That was not helpful telling me. I didn't just look at his paperwork. He's deep water. He showed me his photo, his flats. Uh, we talked, all of us during these hearings, and then there was no response. If they had the capability in the hearings to respond to us, then that capability should have been demonstrated then. It is not typical to file an abatement. And if there's an error, the person should come in. And they shouldn't have to file an abatement. The assessor or agent or whoever should be able to say, oh, Bruce, it, this is deep water. That's all my bad. They changed the keystroke, and that individual takes the certificate of abatement release. And they put, hey, I've made mistakes, and I, and Bruce love it. They know where my stuff is. It sits right on there. The CMA, due to keystroke error, said Bruce was deep water. Bruce's flats. I recommend that you abate Bruce in the following amount. Then Bruce never has to file. I'll go through the stress all the time. I'll come in and have copies made. An abatement is not the typical approach. It's communication with people. Even after commitment, and if an error is made, the certificate of release would come to you folks. And then you either have the confidence and the person bringing you the certificate of release and their recommendation, and you sign it, or you're saying, wait a minute, this one doesn't sound right because I've lived in West Bath my whole life. We're gonna table this one. We want a little more information on this one. But these look okay. But you're not giving us the option to speak with Parker or someone else who can then, with keystroke, correct the error and simply file the certificate of release recommended to you. I'm not saying anyone should have that power. That's your power. But you're putting a lot on us as the taxpayers. A correction requiring a certificate of abatement release is typical. But making people file these abatements, bringing proof, photographs, and tons of paperwork is not. And taking the paperwork well by all of us who participated in good faith with these hearings away from this town hall is not at all typical. It's unheard of. They should be in a jacket and a file cabinet where they could then be accessed. Thank you for letting me speak.
And so, you, so Carly, you said, you know, I had the opportunity to address my abatement. So I got my tax bill, and I didn't pay any attention to it. Because I had, I had the abatement last year being charged for a finished attic and a finished garage, which I didn't have, or finished basement and finished attic, which I don't have. And then I turned around, and so I thought my card was accurate. And then when I pulled my property cards and find out the significant differences, it was well past the time that I had the opportunity to even sit down with Parker. I didn't, I, I got my bill. I didn't pay attention to it. And then I pulled my property card after that timeframe and saw the significant errors. So, that's, I, I missed that. So now I'm in an abatement. But I raised my hand saying, I wasn't taxed enough. No one else is gonna do that voluntarily, I don't think, or willingly, or most people won't. You know, so what-
They can't speak for them.
You know, what if we, what are we missing in a town revenue? Is it from that?
Find out what they can do. They're busy with a lot of other towns, so I have to ask them about their schedule.
But we, we, we just, we're not addressing the community. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to before.
The time paid for a revale. And revale includes the data. It does, it's sales analysis, cost tables, grading information. West Bath doesn't have it. And if Bob Gart's dead, West Bath is screwed. West Bath paid for it. West Bath should possess it. And if you want to go with somebody else, you should have the data that West Bath paid for. Right now, the only people who have the data that you have, that the Board of Assessors have to function with is not in West Bath's hands. That's not light. It's not practical. And it's got to change.
It should last fifteen years, and Bob and I are probably not gonna last fifteen years.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try again. Um, I move that the select board establishes a timeframe that our community can come to hear the revale process and what options they should pursue if they feel the information is inaccurate.
I would want for Christine to call Parker Appraisals and ask about correction versus abatements. Is that, has it possible solution?
Yeah, I, I can speak with them. And I can also speak with them about their availability and when they can-
Okay.
What their schedule will allow them to meet with people.
Because it sounds like, in your case, it should be a correction and not an abatement. And if that's something that you could-
But I think we're still way, way away from where I think I should be.
That's fine. If there's some easy correction and you don't have to go through this whole-
I, I've got other issues too. And I'd also like to add, a man had an attitude when I talked to him. He had a big attitude.
Yes.
Um, I know nothing about the background or, um, of the whole thing. I, I didn't even know about the card you're alluding to. I mean, I gave a bill, I paid the taxes, but perhaps next year I'll be a little more astute.
Well, you can pull this year and last year.
But my point was gonna be, this gentleman made a very, very important point in the information that we, as a town, need to have in our possession. And I don't think we have that.
We don't.
Well, it's not that they won't give it to us. I just wanted to make that clear.
No, it's not that we don't have any information in our possession.
Right.
You don't want any, you want all.
I agree.
Can I come in tomorrow and get more than what you provided me? Or is that the extent of what you have? In the binder, in the red binder.
Oh, are you talking about the manual? I thought you were talking about the individual property cards.
I don't care about those, no.
Okay. We have the, we have the property cards. We have notes from them. We might have what you provided. I'm not sure if that's enough.
Not the list of sales. And I did catch you off, and I apologize. But it's the sales that are, the meat. So, opening up-
I guess there's kind of a, I thought you were talking about we don't have any information from the revale. You're talking about the sales.
We have sales that are marked on tax maps, if that's helpful for you.
Even that, I'd like to see if I can-
Yes, we have a staff of tax maps that they use to mark sales on.
Well, I think what, the item that-
Yes, that's helpful to you.
The item in the contract calls for create new cost schedules based upon lo- local market. I believe that's exactly what you're looking for. And it is an item that we paid for.
And yeah, and I believe, I don't believe we have that in a manual form here. Um, but we can ask them for it.
The other thing I'd like, Christine, could you, for the next meeting, have how many ba- abatements have been requested?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Well, thirteen, including tonight's. But tonight's are very straightforward.
So, um, I would ask Christine to talk with Parker Appraisal, see what is availability. Is the difference between abatements and corrections?
Or a release, I believe is what it's called.
Um, maybe I'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
For the fifth.
I have a number four, order of assessment review appointments. We have nomination, um, offered to serve from Tracy McDonald. She's done her application. So I believe that she'd be appointed to the Board of Assessment Review. I second that, all in favor? How many members on the board?
How many sets? It's a five-member board with two alternates. And currently, we have four members and one alternate. Is this the fifth member? This is the fourth.
The new president?
The fourth, yeah. Oh.
The ordinance is three regulars and two alternates. Because I chaired it for fifteen years. I feel free to say that's what the ordinance is.
So then we have three members and one alternate and one open alternate space.
Town administrators report?
Um, I do want to ask the board about the schedule for reviewing abatements. Um, I didn't know if it was important to you with Madeline going on vacation, that all three members be present to review abatements? Or if you're comfortable, just two of you reviewing?
I'm comfortable with just two of us reviewing at any time, regardless of who's not here.
Okay, so Madeline will not be at the meeting on the nineteenth of October or November second. Um, by those dates, right?
Yeah.
So, um, I will not schedule abatements for those nights. Um, also, I'm wondering if it's possible, instead of meeting on the second, if, I'm not sure when you're getting back to Madeline, but if you're all available to meet on the night because Julie will also be on vacation and will not be able to do a warrant for the second.
I would be able to meet here on the night. Can I? I have to, I have a meeting, I don't know that, that yet. I have a meeting request for that. I'll, I'll find out tomorrow.
Okay, that we will.
Bless you.
If we can meet on the ninth instead of the second, I think that would be better.
I would check.
Um, the planning board workshop. Um, after Suzanne sent her email out, I did have a chance to speak with Sally about, to clarify whether or not the select board would be able to attend that workshop. And after some discussions, she said the asset would be appropriate for select board members to attend the workshop if they wish.
And what day was that?
Um, it's October third at six P.M. And that is it.
Do you have agenda items?
What have we carried forward from tonight for the next meeting?
Um, there's- To discuss, uh, a meeting to inform the public about, um, the abatement process. Um, and code of conduct.
I would like to meet concerning the code of conduct in executive session.
I'd be great, actually, with our, our town attorney to participate in that too.
Code of conduct for whom?
For the select board and for members of town committees.
And the staff.
And staff.
As well as the staff.
I have concerns if we can't come up with a code of conduct and we bring in the attorney and we gotta pay an attorney for that. We are, we're in trouble as a board.
I'm just asking for clarification of whether she's seen it or not.
I think we can get clarification without spending the money to bring her to a meeting.
I agree. But I, as soon as I get that, I'll be happy to sign it.
I would still like to meet. Did we throw that, you wrote it on that, right? Did we throw that, you wrote it on that, right, contract?
Yes.
And we have so many days to sign it?
Yeah. I didn't tell my term is up, I prefer not to wait that long and have the attorney verify it.
I don't believe you have to return it up.
I do, actually.
Um, I want to redo that. We have, um, I see there need to have the attorney present. So we just need, maybe, um, an email or something?
I'm fine if Sally sent an email saying she has received all of our policy changes.
No, Suzanne, we just want from all of our policy changes, the code of conduct.
No, I believe my request before was all of our policy changes.
We weren't talking about all of our policy changes, we're talking about code of conduct. You just talked a whole list of.
Carly, can you please pull up what I said before? I'm not going to pull it up, because you just talked about, yeah, at the beginning of the meeting Suzanne referenced policies and code of conduct.
Well, we just talked about going into executive session for code of conduct. Now we're going into all policies, or what?
I, I, I'm, I'm happy to have an executive session with Madeline. My request was an email from our town attorney, that she has reviewed and accepted all changes to our policies generically, which includes the code of conduct. I'm, I'm subject to paying for that. I don't.
Can we, um, can we, we don't have, I don't see the, on the.
I actually have it.
Can I see it?
Absolutely.
This is not on the agenda.
No, it is not. This is, this is a request for the next meeting.
So, um, it sounds like we're going to stop, because I think we need to, and I think we need to email to tell you about all policies.
Then where does all policies end? How do we remember everything that we sent to her over the past four years?
I'm pretty confident she could say that she's approved, as of today, and she's accepted.
She doesn't approve, she reviews, and we submit policies and procedures and ordinances to the Board and the town to accept.
So I, I, so I guess, okay, Madeline, I don't want to interrupt you.
Whether or not the attorney has vetted every single word that we have passed, we have passed them. They are our, they are our documents.
Yes, I, I agree that they are our documents that we will run the town on, and I see no problem that, that Claire, because the last conversation we had with the town attorney, she said she did not receive some of the information. So before I sign anything, I want to make sure that the town attorney has received and reviewed.
I don't remember that conversation.
We didn't pass the code of conduct, so the code of conduct is there. If something was supposed to be wrong, and if Suzanne doesn't want to sign it, there's nothing there that says she has to, so I think we're, go on.
I have no problem signing it. I want the, I want confirmation that the town attorney will be accepting the policy.
We all already passed it. It doesn't matter what the attorney thinks at this point, we already passed it, we already voted on it, it's done. It's part of our, if you don't want to sign it, you don't have to sign it.
The, um, is that all we need to do?
We need to do the abatements. I would, I would suggest tabling the municipal valuation form.
Which, the number one?
Yes, please.
Um, I have motioned that we table the municipal valuation form, all in favor?
Second, yes.
I didn't want to leave you hanging out there, Carly. Um, applications for abatement?
We have two applications tonight. The first one is for Jeffrey Lamont, whose homestead exemption was not applied this year.
And when we make these motions, can we just reference the map and lot and the amount of the abatement?
The abatement is for, okay. I move that the, uh, abatement for tax map lot, U-oh-four, tax map, U-oh-four, lot six.
That's actually a reduction in valuation.
Um, and the reduction in valuation is for twenty-five thousand?
And that was due to the homestead?
Homestead exemption was not applied.
I move that we accept that request of twenty-five thousand dollars for.
I'm in favor.
Madeline, do you agree?
Second.
All in favor?